Oh, it's that time.
All right. Welcome back, Commissioners. Happy afternoon and back to you, Chair Harrington.
Well, welcome to the afternoon edition of the Tuesday, November 5th, 2024 Washington County Board of Commissioners Work Session. We have the full complement of Commissioners. All five of us are here. Our next topic is the proposed 2025 state and federal agendas for Washington County and Clean Water Services. Come on up, team. That's why we have the Government Relations. Yes, and we have both your presentation and the two documents in our packet. Boy, are we prepared.
We are. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Yeah, I'm gonna kick it aside. Yeah, thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Pablo Nieves Valenzuela. I'm a Government Relations Manager.
Good afternoon, Tracy Rainey, Government Relations Manager for Clean Water Services.
Commissioners, Carly Silva-Gabrielson, Government Relations Manager, Washington County.
Commissioners, Zokker Khan, Government Relations Manager here at Washington County.
Great. So, yeah, as you said, Chair, we're here to discuss our state and federal legislative agendas. And so just moving to the next slide here, we're gonna start by just going over the agenda. So first, we're going to discuss the purpose of the presentation and the policy question that we're asking you all to answer today. Next, we'll move into the 2025 federal legislative agendas for both the county and Clean Water Services. And then, following that, the legislative agenda for the state legislative agenda for the county and for Clean Water Services. After that, we'll discuss our capital project requests and next steps. All right, so our goal for today is to share our updated 2025 legislative agendas for both Washington County and Clean Water Services. And the policy question that we're focusing on is, should staff bring the agendas to a board meeting for final approval of the board following this presentation? And with that, I'll pass through to the second.
Commissioners, thank you. We have included our portfolios, just so that you are aware of them. And one update to the slide, which is in the middle, I am adding general counsel to my portfolio. So we will be sending out updated portfolio documents to all of you.
I think I'm going to just cut out the three boxes and paste it to a little index card and stick it in my wallet. There's no way I'm gonna remember all that.
Sounds good.
I'm gonna write along the bottom, Tracy Rainey, CWS.
Thank you for that, Chair. So next, we will turn to the federal legislative agenda. Our first slide covers the information that you've seen before on continuing the use of the 2024 principle to allow the flexibility to address concepts that come forward at the federal level, specifically increasing the allocation of private activity bonds. So I'm gonna click through this slide, because there's been no changes here. I'll pass it over to my colleague, Tracy.
Thank you. And the Clean Water Services, as you'll recall, has federal guiding principles. So these are the broader principles that we use to help provide us guidance in how we approach advocacy at the federal level. There have been no changes to this slide since we last talked. So I will not read through each of them unless there are questions or any comments. Okay. Okay, so shifting into our proposed federal priorities, we have two slides of those priorities. These are the more specific items that we anticipate working on. And some of these are very familiar, as they're ongoing issues for us that we continue to work on. There have been no changes to the federal priorities either. So I will, unless there are questions on this slide and the four that you see before you, I'll advance to the next slide, which has our remaining three priorities. And there have been no changes that have been made to this slide either from our prior conversation.
Can I ask one question?
Oh, yes, please.
Advancing seismic model. We've talked about that for years. Is that the only threat, though? I always thought that maybe erosion of the Earth and dam and other... Is it only seismic, or shouldn't it be replaced regardless of seismic?
My understanding, Director Rogers, is it really is the seismic component that is advancing the project as we know it now. There may be some potential erosion issues. But again, I think the opportunity that we have with making the seismic modifications is that we're gonna have a structurally sound facility that will last us into the future. So not to say that there's not any other threats, I think, associated with that facility. The seismic one, though, is the glaring one that we are excited to address. Okay, any other questions? Okay, I will hand this, then, I believe, to Pablo.
It's me, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. So, yeah, now we're shifting gears to the Washington County State Legislative Agenda.
Which has a theme of no unfunded or underfunded mandates.
That's right, and that's exactly where we're starting here.
Repeat with me.
As you all know, you know, one of our top priorities here is to secure stabilized and sustainable funding for services that the state requires the county to provide. Since our last presentation, we did make some changes to the related sub-priorities for this one. So I'm just gonna move through those. So first, just to simplify, we combined the first two bullets, which were both related to community corrections programs, and emphasized the why, for, you know, why those things should be included. So it now reads, "Fully fund community corrections agencies to ensure required service levels are provided, supported, supporting targeted investments to reduce recidivism and improve public safety, including enhanced funding for justice reinvestment grants." That justice reinvestment grant part was previously a separate bullet. We figured it made sense to just combine those. All right, so for the next bullet point, which is focused on increasing funding for our Assessment and Taxation Department, we also added a "why" clause. So right now, so now the updated version says, "Strengthen funding for county assessment and taxation operations to robustly support the fair collection of local revenues for all jurisdictions that rely on property taxes." Next, let's see. So we, again, we added a "why" clause to the third sub-priority. It now says, "Increase funding for the county law library to ensure access to legal materials for community members that need support navigating the legal system and seeking justice." So lastly, we add... Yeah, so lastly, we added clarification to our last sub-bullet related to funding for substance use disorder in response to feedback from county subject matter experts, leadership, and the board about the need to specify the programs that need more funding and the reasons for that need. So the revised language says, now says, "Procure funding to support individuals with substance use disorder by sustaining or expanding access to equitable treatment across the continuum of care." So as part of that, we aim to, one, fix funding formulas to utilize accurate and transparent data to better account for the needs of the treatment and recovery resources in Washington County, such as the Behavioral Health Resource Network. And for this next sub-bullet, it's the second from the bottom, if you're following on the presentation. Unfortunately, there are a couple typos in this. I believe there was a copy and paste error. So I'm gonna read this one really carefully, so that you all can hear it from me. So it says, so what we want to write this as now is, "Create a new funding formula for future recommended or required programs, such as the County Deflection Program, to support the county and community service providers' capacity needs and programmatic costs to assist with prevention efforts and help those seeking treatment with overcoming addiction." So, yeah, and then the very last piece here, "Fully fund the additional requirements and tools created in HB 4002 for those with substance use disorders that become justice-involved, including specialty courts, community corrections, the District Attorney's Office, expungement programs, and medications for opioid use disorder in carceral settings." So this is the piece that we've made the most changes to. I wanna pause here for a moment and just ask if there's any questions or comments at this point.
Can I ask you to read that, the changes again, on the second bullet?
Yeah, you mean the second one under procure funding?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so what we want the language to say now is, "Create a new funding formula for future recommended or required programs, such as the County Deflection Program, to support the county and community service providers' capacity needs and programmatic costs to assist with prevention efforts and help those seeking treatment with overcoming addiction."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Different way of asking that. What does that mean?
Yeah, so, I mean, what it really means is making sure that we have the right funding formulas in place to...
I get that. What does it really mean?
That we need to be paid for the work that we're doing to help folks with substance use disorder. So I would simplify it at least.
And to also future-proof the language, Commissioner Rogers.
A lot of words to say, very thingy.
Fair point, yeah.
If I could contribute as well, I don't myself have a concise definition for what the continuum of care represents. So I just did a Google, not a Google, a quick search on the Washington County website. And there isn't an easy explanation that I've been able to find in this just moment. And so I would appreciate receiving that.
Clarification on...
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. And, Zokker, feel free to correct me. You know, our understanding, though, is that it's about people accessing substance use disorder treatment at various stages, whether they need full rehab or...
Oh, it's not just substance abuse. There's a whole continuum of care model.
Right.
You know, it's like I want the Wikipedia...
Sure.
Short paragraph of what the continuum of care is. So I just wanna make sure that for our agenda, legislators just have that quick definition.
Also make sure that's available in an appropriate place on our website, so it's accessible to community members.
Yeah, that's great. That's great. Thank you.
Yep.
I have a quick question for you, Pablo.
Yeah.
Those three bullet points that you read out, the bullet point before that says, "Procure funding", are you foreseeing Washington County to have a bill that we're gonna try to push through for this? Or is this, how do you foresee this happening at the state level?
Yeah, I'll start and I'll ask Zokker to back me up on this. But, yes, well, so, you know, there is gonna be an agency budget bill, probably multiple agency budget bills that have funding for deflection and behavioral health resource networks. So we'll support higher levels of funding in those. But we do have, we do have plans to introduce legislation that would create a new funding formula for deflection programs and another one to shift away from the formula used for the burns for behavioral health resource networks. Do you wanna add anything?
Yeah, no, that's correct. That's exactly correct. So we'll have a bill that we introduce within the legislature to have a new funding formula for behavioral health.
And then, just to expand that question and make it original, are you having conversations with the other two counties who are also expressing concerns about the funding? Okay, so this might be...
We just had to call this.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, this one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions here? All right, well, thank you all for the feedback. I'm gonna pass it over to Zokker.
Commissioners, this is a slide that you already approved of, but I just wanted to reiterate workforce remains a priority for Washington County.
Commissioners, this next slide is something that you've already approved, Deb. In consultation with our subject matter experts, I did make some very minor language adjustments. However, the substance of the material, the stats, the figures, nothing has changed. On this next slide, touching on our focus for 100% consent-based special district annexations, no changes here, so I'll click through.
Thank you. So slide 15 here is about the Habitat Conservation Plan. The language here focuses on the HCP's impact on municipalities. And last time we presented this priority to you, the first bullet point was really focused on the revenue impact to Washington County specifically. And the feedback received from you was that there needed to be more emphasis in our agenda on how the HCP is affecting other jurisdictions as well. So that's how we broadened the language. And so now it says, "Establish a..." Oh, sorry, it's the second bullet down. That's the part we edited, where it says, "Establish a dedicated state funding source for replacing county timber revenue for all impacted local tax districts."
So for the Clean Water Services state legislative agenda that's been proposed, you'll see the proposed state guiding principle. Again, this is the broader principle that will help guide us throughout the legislative session in terms of how we respond to various bills. We did make one change from the last work session, and that was a really, I think, helpful, good recommendation, which is to add the words "economic vitality" when we talk about us ensuring the quality of life and the economic vitality throughout the Twelton River watershed. So we made that change. No other changes made. Okay, so moving into our state legislative priorities that are proposed, there have been no changes to the four priorities that are on this slide. We do have one more slide of priorities, but I'll pause in case there are any questions or comments on this particular list slide. Okay. All right, moving into the final five of nine priorities that we have. Again, there are no changes that have been made to this from the last time that we met with you all. And I believe I will be handing it to... Okay. Thank you.
Commissioners, we've retained the previously approved slide in relation to the capital improvement projects. And with that, I'll turn it back over to Tracy.
Oh, wow, that was fast.
Yeah, could I just... The courthouse replacement planning act. Do we know yet what the OJD will be advancing with their budget?
So we have not seen the Chief Justice's recommended budget, but we definitely expect them to include this. All indications are that that's gonna be...
All the, I'm assuming that all the other asks would be through just... Caucus, Washington County Caucus member asks. Okay, got it. Thank you.
Clean Water Services capital project that we've identified and spoke to you all about previously is the Western Washington County Inflow and Infiltration Rehabilitation Project. Again, we receive federal funding for this project, but we do need additional resources and are looking to the state for additional resources in order to gain the efficiencies in that system out there and address the INI issues that that community, as well as Gaston and Cornelius, are experiencing. We are aware that there will be, it looks like there will be a water omnibus bill, which seems to be the likely vehicle where we would submit this as a project for consideration.
Stacy, the federal funding that CWS received, was there a matching?
There is. It was an 80/20%, so a very minimal match of 20% for us. But again, we need more money in order to really make that project meaningful. Okay, Carly.
Commissioners, with that, we will just touch on some next steps. Since you last saw the slide, we added two exciting dates that we're looking towards. The first being our legislative breakfast with the delegation that will be scheduled on, well, is scheduled, excuse me, on December 5th. And then we also wanted to just call out that we are anticipating that the state legislative session will begin on January 21st. So we are looking forward to those dates. And then, of course, our concluding slide is the interim calendar. Nothing new on there, but we are already, we've mentally flipped over to 2025 and thinking about a lot of important dates that are coming up. And with that, Chair Harrington, I will flip back to our policy question and return the conversation to you.
Short session?
Well, it's gonna be a long one.
That was denial.
And just to segue, Chair, should staff bring the agendas to a board meeting for final approval for the board?
Well, I think of it a little bit differently. Commissioners, it seems that we have pretty complete state and federal agendas at this point. Do you have any questions first? No questions?
Yep, I got one.
Oh, okay, go for it.
Our regional partners at Metro, is there anything that you lean from conversations that might affect our particular agendas? They probably something, I presume. I have a cap, probably know better than I. But is there anything that they're going to print, subscribe to, propose that might affect us?
Thank you for that, Commissioner Rogers. Nothing that we're aware of, and my colleagues and I have had fruitful meetings with our counterparts at Metro. So we feel like we will be able to advance our agendas without conflict.
Perfect.
All right, with that answered, is everybody ready to move forward with having this on our agenda?
Yes.
Great.
And I'm gonna make a comment about the courses. I appreciate you guys getting more information on that. I'm assuming we're working with Brandon and AMC as well. And I have other meetings next for the governors that I have more information.
Thank you.
Could I ask another question about the December 5th breakfast? Has that been announced to the caucus members as well, or...
Thank you for that question, Commissioner Therese. The save the dates will be going out by the conclusion of this week, so we look forward to making that news public.
Okay. But it's a definite date.
It is, yes.
On our calendar, it is.
Yeah, I saw it. I saw it. I suspect many of us will be seeing people today and tomorrow.
All right.
Starting, urging them to show up by 7:45 to pick up their breakfast. And the agenda starts at 8:00 and will end promptly at 9:00. With a theme of no unfunded or underfunded mandates. I'm ready to do a comedy stand-up routine. Each of you wraps some...
I think we can abbreviate that to just "more money".
Well, then, we'll have to do a tag.
They said it well.
Dan's gonna put that into some sort of...
I've got garage...
Can I add a word to that? Lots.
Lots more money.
Thank you.
Who knew we would be having so much fun with it?
More money, less rules. More money, less rules.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Touches that you've had with us on different topics, so.
Here we go.
I just, you know, remember Y2K, so where did... Where have 25 years gone?
I've not heard that for a while.
All righty, well, now we're a topic completely different. Local option levies. Oh, public safety in libraries are...
Do you want the little one? Do you want the tall chair?
Okay.
Yep.
Marnie.
I just sit by the tallest.
I know, and the tallest in the air.
That's when you say, "It's not about me, it's about Erin."
Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Erin Calvert, one of the Assistant County Administrators. And I'm joined today by a team who will bring this timeline and milestones for Levy's presentation to you. Since we'll be shifting between speakers, I'm gonna go ahead and turn it over to the team to introduce themselves, and then we can move seamlessly through the slides, hopefully.
Pass the...
Yes, we'll just pull the GR like they modeled for us just a minute ago.
Yes. Good afternoon, Chair Harrington and Board. Marnie Kyle, I'm one of the Assistant County Administrators. And I have the pleasure of now having WCCLS as part of my portfolio. And so I have the toughest job here today for the presentation is I'm turning it over to Lisa, because I am in big-time learning mode. So I've only got to sit in on about a half of the meeting to learn about the topic so far. But had a really great meeting last Friday, I think Thursday, maybe, with the library directors and city managers. And it was just fascinating. Learned a lot, so that's my role for today.
Hand it off to Lisa.
Hi, everybody. I'm Lisa Tattersall. I'm the manager of the Washington County Cooperative Library Services.
And I'm Philip Bransford, County... Commissions officer.
Philip's watching too many episodes of the podcast. Philip, that's words for you.
By the way, Tanya, Philip's got a message.
You just watched the big county administrator Barbie that day.
It's Ken.
All right, well, the purpose of today's presentation is to provide a reminder on our general approach when preparing measures for the ballot to describe the progress and the development of both the library and public safety local option levies and to walk through the revised timeline for the voter surveys. The policy questions we'd like you to think about as you hear this presentation today is if staff are on the right path regarding the approach to the levies? And does your board have any questions and/or additional direction for staff? Okay, so this slide should be familiar to you. It captures a process that starts on the left-hand side and in the blue triangle. And it indicates action steps that are not only iterative, meaning they're informed by discussion and response of that action, but is also happening somewhat on the top of each other or at the same time, which is just a little more difficult to kind of put onto a slide. As you can see from the red circle, both levy teams, the staff, and the steering committees are working through voter survey planning, financial and program analysis, identifying investment areas and costs, and working to develop potential scenarios. So as we move through the polling, the reporting information back to your board, and then developing the levy proposal, there will be a lot more touchpoints with your board as we move through this process. Okay, we're gonna talk a little bit about the progress so far. And we thought this slide, I just like the graphic on this slide, because this is a lot of probably how some of us are feeling, including the steering committee. Things aren't always linear. Sometimes we're in a maze, and we just have to kind of hold out hope that the process is gonna get us there, and we are confident that we will. So this was a good graphic for the moment. As a general update and a reminder for both levies, in May of this year, staff convened a levies kickoff meeting where we began working the timelines and the milestones backwards from the November 2025 election date, which is, of course, the timeline that your board directed staff to target for both the library and public safety local option levies. We formed steering committees for both levies. And for the record, I will note that Chair Harrington and Commissioner Phi are on the Public Safety Steering Committee, and that Commissioners Therese and Willie are on the Library Steering Committee. We've hired EMC Research to work with the teams to gauge voter perceptions on these topic areas and have begun drafting the questionnaires for the first round of voter surveys. And here, I'm gonna turn it over to Lisa.
Okay, so the Library Levy Steering Committee is composed of Commissioners Therese and Willie, along with staff support from me and Marnie Kyle. So far, we've reviewed the library funding and governance process and deliverables, as that ties really closely to this levy effort. And we've also met with the EMC Research team. The library funding and governance evaluation process is on track to deliver recommended levy rates for your board's consideration in January. Next week, on November 12th, staff will be returning to your board with an update on the library funding and governance process with one of the first major deliverables, which is the current state assessment of the library cooperative. This report outlines the current service levels, the total cost of providing service, and the opportunities identified through this collaborative process to improve our system. The next major deliverable for your board on the funding and governance process will be those future-based service levels recommendation, the estimated cost to provide those base levels of service. And then that will back us into recommended levy rates for your board's consideration. And that will be, we'll be returning to your board on January 28th. We're also working to schedule a work session on the library levy polling results in January.
Um, so I just have started reading my brain for winter weather disruption. And wow, January 28th is going to be here real quickly. I just wanna put a plug in that if we have, you know, a serious weather disruption like we had last year, I am very comfortable with our rolling agendas being recalibrated so that you don't have to try and squeeze eight pounds of flour into a five-pound sack should you not have the ability to do the work before that date. So just, everybody's working really hard as things go. So I just, it just popped into my head.
So I will give an inclement weather update.
So I will give an inclement weather update. We're not expecting any inclement weather right now. So I wanted to ease your mind. I wasn't expecting that reaction. As a reminder, we do have the ability to pivot to virtual meetings. And staff are all prepared to virtual to to telecommuning in the time of significant weather. If we are in extreme significant weather, such as power, yeah, loss of power and ice storm, that's a different situation. That that's an extreme, but I snow, we would just pivot. Generally, we would have some indication the night before a board meeting and I would let your board know we may. But we would be making that call by six AM of the morning. And Anne Ober and Philip are on all those calls. Okay, specific to the public safety levy, the steering committee has been having regular meetings. On the last few meetings, EMC Research has joined to listen in on discussions and begin getting a sense of the topic areas for polling. We've completed a very basic financial analysis on the current service level that the levy provides and the cost to maintain that current service level. There's more financial analysis work to be done, but the steering committee has essentially begun to scope out three different potential scenarios. That is a no rate increase, a rate increase that would maintain the current service level. And then we're discussing potential investment areas that focus on the key challenges and topic areas surfaced in the Public Safety and Justice White Paper that was developed about ten to twelve months ago. And I'll go into these scenarios in a little bit more detail on the following slides. So the current rate of the public safety local option levy is forty-seven cents per thousand of assessed value. If we were to maintain the current rate of forty-seven cents, this would mean the average residential property would increase by about seven dollars in the first year of the new levy, new levy. And that assumes a four point two five percent assessed value increase. Due to the increased cost of delivering services, we would end up with a gap of about thirty-one million dollars in our ability to deliver services and provide for our ending reserve balance. So this means we would actually need to reduce our current service level to stay at the same levy rate. The levy staff team made up of department directors, the budget analysts and and managers and then other department staff went through a high-level reduction exercise early this fall. And that was presented in our steering committee meeting for review and discussion. We determined that based on the projections of the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, maintaining the current rate would mean a reduction of services of nearly twelve percent or about five point two million dollars reduced from that first levy year. So that's one year of the five. So of course, we'd reduce it in subsequent years as well. This would significantly reduce the services in all four of the public safety departments. And then after additional financial analysis, we discovered that in order to maintain current service level, we would need to increase the levy rate to about fifty-three cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. This would raise nearly thirty-one million dollars in additional revenue, which matches the gap from the previous slide for maintaining the current rate.
That's six cents, right?
Yes, six cents.
Can you remind me for the ESPD levy that was just on the ballot a couple of years ago? I think to maintain current services, I know we increased, the rate was increased by fifteen cents. I was trying to remember that was a similar service.
It was similar, yeah. We can get the numbers for you if. So this increase in the levy rate would increase the average residential property owner in Washington County about nineteen dollars and eleven cents in that first year of the new levy.
And I meant to go back and see how my property insurance bill has.
The third scenario the steering committee has been discussing are themes of potential investment areas. And so as I mentioned earlier, having just completed the work and analysis of the Public Safety and Justice System-wide white paper and identifying the key challenges, challenges of the Public Safety and Justice System, we're continuing to discuss those areas in need of investment to bolster either part or all of the entire system. The areas under steering committee discussion are anchored in the paper and include an expanded enforcement and prosecution of domestic violence cases, prosecution of child abuse and child pornography cases, to increase the support for crime victims, to address theft, break-ins, and vandalism, to expand specialty courts, provide culturally specific programs to reduce recidivism, to address our mental health and addiction crisis, and then to better support job skill development for youth and adults in the criminal justice system. And this last bullet is not directly mentioned in the white paper. However, it's been a point of discussion in the Public Safety Steering Committee and of course would have an impact on the success of those working under the supervision of both the Juvenile and Community Corrections Departments. And now I'm going to turn it over to Philip.
Okay, and I just checked Chair in, it was May of twenty twenty-two. The ESPD levy went up fifteen cents to a rate of eighty-three cents per thousand. That's in our urban and incorporated area for. What's that?
Up fifteen, so went sixty-eight to eighty-three, that's pretty significant. So can I, can I go back to? So what you're telling me is if we want to do more than six, these would be the reasons why we would do more than six.
Correct, those are the investment areas that the steering committee is exploring.
But we don't have a dollar number.
Not yet, so that's the current work. That's what's happening next. Yep, great question.
Okay, and as to voter surveys, we appreciate the work that the steering committees have done heretofore to get us ready with all the layers of effort for both levies going on. And we've had a different approach along the way that this slide is attempting to describe. So we're still looking at, as you might recall, we had a had two rounds of surveys that we were anticipating for both levies. One that would happen, you know, just before or around Thanksgiving. And then the second round would be early next year. And what we've talked about, particularly in the Public Safety Steering Committee, but I think we talked about it recently with the Libraries Steering Committee as well, is taking that first round and staggering how we would approach that so that we would carry on with the same timing for the public safety levy, but we would throw in a question or two about the library levy as well. And then that that would allow library levy to come in in January, we would think, and do their round one survey, voter survey. But then they would have a couple of questions about the public safety levy. And then we would carry on with our plan in round two, but maybe move that interview, you know, target date range to April. And that round two voter survey would be for both levies. We would sample higher in that second round and potentially have some of the some of the decision-making. Ideally, would have been completed as to the public safety levy, what whatever the costing and decision-making was around those investment areas or the other two scenarios would be applied in that at that point as well as the goal, which is to get as close as you can to the wording of the ballot material that your that your board would ultimately submit to the Elections Office so that you could really have a predictive, you know, crystal ball, if you will, to see how well we're going to fare in in November.
So I think what I'm hearing you say is you're testing the language and the amount.
Yeah, by that point, we would have, we'd have that ideally sewn up and your board would.
That's what my understanding was.
Okay, great. Yeah, we, your board would have full transparency all the way through.
I think it's time to do the work about that future, potential future state. Leading up to April.
Another advantage, thank you, Chair, that's that's absolutely true. And then the another advantage, if you look at this, is it gives us a couple of bites of the apple as to potential costing for, well, be three bites of the apple really for the public safety side of it because we could ask about it there, we can ask about it again as a segment of the library levy in January. And then both levies come back again and ask again. So in any of those moments, nothing is set in stone. It's it's an exercise in determining what the what the best policy decisions are of the libraries, you know, executive team of our of our public safety system directors and your board. But then all of us get to be on this this journey of determining, okay, well, how's that landing with our with our voters? Because in the end, in the end, that's who will make the final decision as to both, you know, the outcome of both levies.
This is also the point we talked about in our steering committees where if you're going to ask for more, what do I get for mine for the more? And that's to share as well as well.
I I could wait, Philip, but I have a question for you in terms of like, I was just trying to remember myself this morning. The results for the public safety levy in twenty twenty, I believe it was in May twenty twenty ballot. What was the result? I'm trying to figure out if societal life situations and events contributed? And what was the final result of the the measure on the ballot? I was trying to dig up this morning, but then I got distracted, but if you could, if you have it, if not, answer that later. But I'm trying to figure out if like situations like George Floyd, the election, even though it wasn't a presidential election yet, it was in the November, but still if that had any.
No, it happened after.
Right, the the the. Yeah, I think George Floyd was in February, the ballot was on.
No, George Floyd was Memorial Day of twenty twenty.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I could look that up for us here.
All the events.
They passed.
Yeah, no worries. I was just, this morning I was like, is there any societal?
Yeah, the the public safety passed fifty-five percent yes, forty-five percent no in May of twenty twenty.
Wow, close.
Fifty-five percent is not close for a funding measure.
Right, and we were, we increased by five cents.
Yeah.
If I'm not mistaken.
That year?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. You you've heard multiple perspectives.
Yeah, COVID just.
Three months of the COVID, so I don't know if that would have any bearing on anything, but.
Three months, yeah, you're right.
Glad we didn't do it in November then. That might have an impact on things.
Yeah, it's hard to, hard to say without, that's why we really value those voters' surveys because then they can, the voters can tell us.
So I I do have, I have scanned survey questions. And I want to go back and look at that a little bit more closely. But is this going to be, are we going to be calling people?
Yeah, there's going to be a combination of methods, text and and phone calls. It's become, as you might imagine, a real challenge for public opinion research firms to do this sort of work from back in the days when it was just all telephone.
Three modes, phone, email to web, and text to web.
And the 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 secret sauce is randomization. So we'll start with the voter role that our own Elections Office possesses. And there'll be a random selection there until you can get to the sample size targets. That's the, that's the key to any kind of predictive, you know, capability out of the research.
Wouldn't it be great if one of us board members get randomly selected?
I guess what I was thinking, I was, what I was wondering is how long will this survey take?
Oh, the interviews, we're, yeah, we're thinking about two weeks roughly.
Goal length fifteen minutes, sample size four hundred names.
You've seen that. Where did I miss that?
In this very top of.
Attachment, attachment.
Is it the strategy to have?
There it is.
Bring in tandem with one another?
Have which now?
The levies, both levy questions, are they going to be in tandem?
Well, what we've done, what we're proposing now is the, what's on this slide here, where we will stagger the timing and then.
With a general election, whatever the election is, are you thinking they're going to be on the same date?
That's that's what, that's what we've talked about with your board. Yeah, we haven't heard a different direction yet.
Okay, just curious, and is it a governance question? Would that be a third question that would be on this same date?
A third question, I'm not sure.
In the library governance?
Yeah.
That would be a question for your board ultimately.
It's purely a policy. So that would not be on.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so next steps. The next steps, this pertains to both levies. Staff are going to continue refining levy scenarios for steering committee's consideration. We have meetings scheduled with the steering committees throughout November and December. And this will include a lot more financial analysis and more iterative process between the levy staff team and the steering committees based on the information that we're sharing back and forth. As you heard, the voter interviews for the public safety levy will happen in early December. The preliminary preliminary or top-line findings will be shared with the Public Safety Steering Committee at the December eighteenth Steering Committee meeting. And then the full board will have a work session from EMC Research about the public safety survey results on January fourteenth. The Library Levy Steering Committee will review and prepare their draft questionnaire in January of twenty twenty-five. And then, as mentioned, those round one voter interviews for the library levy will also happen in later January of twenty-five. And then we'll schedule a communication with the board once those results are back in. And we anticipate at this point that the round two voter surveys for both levies will be launched around April of twenty twenty-five. And that in the very late winter, early spring, the committees will be working on that round two voter survey clearly with information from the results of voter one survey and the more financial information that we're working through. And then we're still on track to bring scenarios and levy proposals to your board in late spring of twenty twenty-five and ask your board to consider directing staff to file the measures at that time.
I'll just say that while there's nothing that says that the questionnaire on libraries is going to come to the board prior to it being issued to the board in a work session. And I'm not asking for that. Rather, I wanted to say based upon the work session that's upcoming on the current state of the libraries that if I'm successful in getting sufficient understanding from that, that just email it to me, that's all. Okay?
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then, as you know, the work of the voter outreach and speakers bureaus on the staff side will begin until Election Day and all the way through the summer until November fourth. Which is weird to think that's a year away, so I'm sure it'll be here in a in a zip.
Only about eight weeks.
It feels like twenty twenty-five. So in summary, we'd like to highlight some key takeaways for today. You've heard about our staggered approach to the library and public safety voter surveys. You've heard that the financial analysis of both levies will continue over the next few months and we'll continue to refine that information with steering committees and back and forth between the levy staff teams. And that finally, both levies are on track to be filed in the spring of twenty twenty-five for our November election. And then we're just asking again for your board to consider whether staff are on the right track for levy preparation and approach. And is there any other questions your board has and or direction for staff?
I guess I I just, I just want to make sure that, me, one of the big key takeaways from this presentation has been my understanding that it's going to take six cents for the public safety measure to retain current service.
Correct, to maintain current service.
So so anything else is just going to be on top of, on top of that. I just, that's.
That's the initial analysis.
Timelines, I trust all that piece, but I just, because that that was one of our discussions about the libraries, the balance aspect, whether or not it's required. And how's your crystal ball on no more? And how's your crystal ball on no more unfunded or underfunded? Be my rap song. I also want to add that one of the slight positives about going out in December with the public safety levy poll is, or survey is that for some taxpayers, they'll still have their tax bill in mind. Any other board questions?
I, I don't know. Don't think I have a question. We have, I have something coming to you in an email, but you know, one of the thing I really appreciate from government is transparency and accessibility, and that includes like educating the residents and the audience and community members about the topics that were in discussion or the policy decisions that we're making. Now, with that said, what I would like moving forward from this presentation is to sort of back up a little bit and take a step back and really say, okay, this is the public safety levy. This is the revenue with fifty-three cents. This is how much that comes in, and this is what the expenditure is. And what we've foreseen, I know, I appreciate, like, this is, I, you did this with me in a deep dive. And you've all educated me in, in private briefings, but I think the, the community would appreciate that, that level of transparency and, and that being the more you know, kind of a thing, that whole NBC, the more you know them. So I think we should provide that slide to say, this is what the revenue is, this is what the expenditure is. And then these are the services and positions that are covered with the current levy. And then we can really have a robust discussion about and, and sort of decide as a board what investment we want to make, what services we want to retain, and where else? What other rocks can Tanya turn, figure out some money? If there is not, we, we get it as a committee member, I get, I get it, there isn't. And we, we've been doing that sort of like a committee level of conversations about where every dollar is going. But I'm not sure we're providing that level of education to the residents and community members. So if we could add a slide that really just says high level, not, not nitty gritty, like board drawings and all that stuff we did in the committee, but sort of like, what are we talking about here?
And Commissioner Phi, just for clarification, you mean basically the amount that each department might get and the breakdown of FTE and services that that provides?
Well, even, not even like, not even that level of disaggregation. Like at, at the beginning, yes, you could disaggregate each department, but at the, at the higher level, what, what revenue are we discussing? How much, right? What are the expenditures? What positions do these money fund? And then if we're to maintain, what are we maintaining? And then how does the investment fit in with the six cents, right? And so just, those are, and then you could disaggregate, say, the DA gets this much, the sheriff's office gets this much. This much goes this, you know, so I think you could decide, I trust your expertise and your subject matter expert here, but I think I'm missing that high level of framing the, the topic. Framing for the community, what is that, where are we going? And then we can have that conversation of like. But, so that's, that will be a need for me.
So if I could push back just a little bit, we could go to slide ten. That's when I, that's why I asked the question. I needed dollar assessment to this. But I, I would be concerned about being too specific. Because somebody's gonna go through there and say, I don't think I like that DA, I'm not gonna do that. So they start picking this thing and they're going, eh, you know, no, I'm not gonna do this. And so this is pretty general on the flip side of things, I guess I'm maybe find a happy spot.
So these are different categories that we need to explore at the public safety steering committee level, or just like you all are working on, there's the current state for libraries, then there's a bunch of work being done for consideration for a future state. Whether it's funding more service hours, funding more books, funding more programs. I'm not very well versed in libraries to give you any further examples. But these are just different examples of, of service changes or funding changes. And one of it might just be resiliency of keeping those services going in the midst of state budget cuts, right? To keep a service level while the state reduces their funding. So this is further, these are further smaller or more specific scenarios to be worked out. But this is very much akin to the work that we went through with the what we were used, what we went through for the, for the January referral in twenty twenty for the May ballot. We looked at what the current services are and a couple of, only a couple of additional service changes to, to meet community needs. We know that on the public safety, and you're gonna be doing that similar kind of thing with libraries. We know already on the public safety side, based upon our having heard for a few years about stresses and strains on our public safety system. That's why the board asked our staff to put together a comprehensive paper of those challenges, stresses and strains. And so we've tried to harvest out of that. And so we're going, going to be taking these different topics and trying to say, okay, for this level of work, it involves these kinds of service provisions and kind of costs. So that if there is a level of service for these different things, what might we want to consider? There's a lot of sausage making and touching back to the board before we take this potential list of eight or so and go, okay, well, what do we want to put together? Because each of those things would go towards reducing recidivism and increasing public safety in Washington County. But we know we can't do everything. So that's what this approach is getting to. Which may not be to the granular level that Commissioner Phi is talking about.
And that's what I was just responding about is that I like the generality of this. Versus the specificity that the piece says. I was just making a comment in response to that. So other than that.
Can I do a process check in? Can we go back to slide three, I believe it is?
I'm not sure why the numbers are always gray instead of a nice bold black.
I think everyone picked up on that helpful.
I do it all.
It's coming up. So I just want to do a process check in of the purpose why we're here today. We are going out with the first survey. The first survey is kind of getting the pulse of the community. What does the community think about public safety and justice and library that should be considered in scenario development? So that's before we get to the scenario development. So I want to connect some of Commissioner Phi, what you're saying, and Commissioner Willie. You're getting into the detail of the scenario development. So of course, our voters need to see what is the investment we're making at Washington County and the public safety and justice? What is the levy supporting and getting into that granular? That information is not completed yet by either of the steering committees. So I just want to, right now, we're in the survey development and launching the survey. And today's presentation was just to update you on what work is currently occurring within the committee.
And to end my point for a second, I, I think everybody leaned in on what I was saying. I just want to end a, a, a point of gratitude. Erin and Philip, I really appreciate you all bringing me along in this journey. My first levy to participate as a, as an elected, so I appreciate you just slowing me down and giving me as much as you can. I think you send me a lot of documents and I have, you take my questions and my emails, so I appreciate that. Lisa, I'm not leaving you out, but sure you're working really hard. And I do want to lean in on something the Chair requested about the library. I'm okay with that process as well, whatever you share. And then if I have a question, I'll ask you and I'll ask the Chair as well.
The one thing I'd like to bring out, and I'm not, I'm, I may be often left field over here, but some of the issues that you brought up about education and that type of thing with the public. I wonder if that's part of the campaign process and if you're thinking further down the line when we get into, after everything's settled and we're way down in the other triangle. Are you thinking about how do we educate the public through the campaign process?
Commissioner Trace, thank you for that question. You know, the, here's the lens I put on when I was reviewing this material. Obviously, I'm a committee member, so I get this information ahead of time, but I sort of said, if I was a resident, how can I follow this journey? What information can I gleaned that to really say I really understand that what the topic and the decision in front of the board? Because essentially, we're not directing you, but we are giving you sort of, you on the right path, doing what you're doing. Which is not to you to say, you know, you're on the right track, which is a, is a decision ultimately. So I, I put that hat on to say, as a resident, do I really follow this topic? Do I really understand? And what are there more questions that I had? And, and then sort of just opened my notes. And the easiest way I could figure out with that, you know, what Commissioner Willie said is true. Without, you know, overwhelming the residents with, you know, disaggregating and disaggregating and disaggregating datas. Just what would be the key crucial information that's really relevant to the residents? Because ultimately, this is about money.
So if I could bring us back to the last slide. There you go. Questions for board? Does the board have questions and or additional direction for staff? Does anybody have any remaining questions? Okay, so here we are, we're on a path of having the public safety topic go before the voters in a survey in December and then reporting back to us after that. And the libraries going out with a survey in January. Is the board comfortable and with the proposal of further work, further touch points and additional voter surveys in April leading up to our referral by June? That is a quick summary of the path that staff is on. Is the board supportive of staff moving forward on said path regarding the approach to both levies? Terrific. Thank you very much for your patience. Really appreciate it. Keep up the good work. We're all on the journey. Thank you very much.
But Chair, I have one different item. I want to add for next week. This is from COOPAC. They are asking us for a letter of support on their applying for environmental protection agency coalition grant to fund brownfield assessment, depending on who these are.
Who are they applying to, state or federal?
They are applying to beds. And they're gonna be working with our active group as well. I have copies of the letter. We can, if we. She needs it by next week, so she.
How long is it?
I mean, we can do, I can give it to you, we can do.
Well.
We don't have to do it.
Would everyone be comfortable just taking a moment to look at it now?
Yeah, it's pretty short. And thank you, I just got this.
Did anyone here on staff help you?
Where's Maida? No, this came from Sarah Lou at COOPAC. No, I think we, this is the first time I've, so that's why it was.
Okay.
We don't have to do it today.
Yeah, I think it talks about how we will be an active participant versus are. Washington County is committed to participate in a coalition, so my question is, are we already funded to do this work? I don't want to get ahead of our budget process, so.
Okay, good questions.
So everybody mark it draft, because it doesn't have a watermark. But we'll make sure to put it on our very top of the agenda for next Tuesday.
Yeah, that'll work.
Yeah, and if there is any, we're also open to, the letter might go through some refinements.
Yes, absolutely.
I had originally thought that this was work that COOPAC was already, and it may be that COOPAC is prepared to do the work. And that we're just supporting COOPAC seeking a grant for the work to be done, so.
What I thought too, until you just put that sentence up, and so let's follow up on that, make sure.
Okay, cool, great. The twelfth, right? Eleven twelve. Okay, that, next Monday is a holiday. In case you're like me and still haven't calibrated with the fact that it's November.
Yeah, I didn't really.
So don't show up to work next Monday. Do please be thinking about the many veterans that we have. Not only serving here in, as Washington County employees, but here in our Washington County community. But across our whole nation. So does anyone have anything else with regard to today? I know from comments from commissioners earlier, we are all in support of our great elections team and our greater one Washington County organization to continue to support this being a wonderful election week here in Washington County. So we'll see y'all next Tuesday morning. We are adjourned.